We're good. I'd like to call the order of the City of North Ridgeville Planning Commission meeting for April 9th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Ali.
President.
Grupman.
Here.
Schuman.
Here.
Abens.
Here.
Smolik.
Here.
Members of the administration, Planning and Development Director Lieber.
Here.
City Engineer Evanson.
Here.
At this time, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has all the commission members had a chance to review the meeting minutes from March 12th, 2024? Is there any corrections at this time? Hearing none, those minutes shall stand. We have some correspondence that are brought to us by the administration. Director Lieber, if you want to go over some of the administrative approvals and zoning certificates, plus planning projects and updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two zoning certificates since your last meeting. One is Fujisan, it's a restaurant taking over where Main Wok was located. They're adding hibachi, I've heard. And then Taco St. Pueblo, I know they've been open for a while, but it took us a while to hunt them down to file their required paperwork, so that's a little bit late in coming to you. Project, planning project updates, the Ridgeville Ready Master Plan is in front of council. It will be on third reading, so up for adoption at the April 15th city council meeting. So I hope that it gets adopted that night. There'll be, you know, 30-day effective date, but I think we'll be ready to wrap up the plan and make it publicly available and to really promote it widely in the community and to begin the work of implementation. Which brings me to the next two items. We have already begun a process to conduct a comprehensive audit of our zoning code in our subdivision regulations. We've engaged the firm McBride Dale Clarion, the same firm that did your Planning Commission training in December. They are in their capacity as zoning experts, are going to be in this first phase of work, really taking a deep dive into our code, working with staff and other stakeholders to understand what areas of weakness we have in the code, what we're hoping to change and add. And then they'll be creating a diagnosis document that will then lead us to future code updates that they can also assist us with. So the first step is always listening and learning, and so we'll have two days' worth of meetings, focus groups, and other activities starting next Monday and Tuesday, so April 15th and 16th. They'll be coming in on the 15th, meeting with our steering committee, doing a city tour. And then there'll be a council workshop that evening. The next day, there's, I think, four focus groups. There's a board and commission one that you've been invited to. There's a staff one, a design professional, and then a developer focus group. So we're trying to get a cross-section of people that interact with our codes and ordinances to provide some initial feedback to the consultant. And then we'll go from there. So that's exciting that we're making, we're underway with that project. And then last, our active transportation plan continues. We had a rather poorly attended public meeting on March 25th, unfortunately, mostly just attended by steering committee members and other supporters. But we have been getting good response to our survey, so it continues to be posted on our website. We've had, I think, probably over 500 responses at this point, but it would be nice to get more in a city of 36,000, especially when we hear how much people are invested in connectivity and bikeability and walkability. So those are the topics that the survey covers. So we'll, we're trying to promote that between now and, and the 15th. Our next steering committee meeting for that project is March, no, May, we've passed March, May 16th, and then we'll be having a second public meeting, probably in the later June, early July timeframe. So that's where things stand with those projects, and I'll be sure to keep you posted.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Is, I read something about a NOACA grant that we just got, is that correct? A grant for road resurfacing or?
Yes.
Which, what, where is that, and could you tell us about it?
Sure. So NOACA had applied on behalf of the City of North Ridgeville for funds through the congressional earmark process for rehabilitation of a segment of Sugar Ridge Road. So that particular segment is between Waterbury and the Bender intersection. It's a $2 million award, so, you know, NOACA actually is the applicant for the project, but had contacted the city in order to collaborate with us on, on making this funding request. So that was about a year ago, and we found out at the end of March this year that we were successful. So that project will, you know, replace the roadway, but it will also add some bike and pedestrian facilities that it currently doesn't have in, in that area by Shady Drive Complex and with Waterbury there, it seems like a nice amenity to add.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I believe there's no old business, so let's go to new business. Madam Secretary, please read the first application.
PPZ 2024-0252, Rough Bricketting Systems, 38778 Taylor Parkway, PPN 07-00-047-000-096. Applicant Brandon Klein, Geis Construction, 10020 Aurora Hudson Road, Streetsboro, Ohio, 44241. Proposal consists of a new manufacturing facility, property zoned I-3 heavy industrial district.
Okay, Director Lieber, findings of fact?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'll leave it to the applicant to discuss their business model, which is very fascinating, but I'm excited that we're bringing in a very sustainable manufacturing business to North Ridgeville. This project is going to include an office and a distribution and manufacturing component on one of the last vacant pieces of property on Taylor Parkway. It's a 10 and 1/2 acre piece located just west of Dayton Freight. So the ultimate long-term build-out will be a facility of about 100,000 square feet, but at this point, Roof is seeking approval for a 25,000-square-foot facility with future phases for both building and parking improvements. So again, just the first phases before you tonight for approval. On the zoning side, the building meets all setback height and lot coverage requirements. You know, we have noted that there's currently one curb cut proposed onto Taylor Parkway, but they'll be looking to potentially add a second later on, once the building is expanded to accommodate truck traffic and circulation. They have responded to all of our requests for additional information, including we had asked about showing future parking and, along with the future building. We had asked for them to submit additional lighting information about the light fixtures, which was provided. Those are compliant, they've cleaned up the photometric plan and exhibit, which is zoning compliant as well. I think they've done a nice job with the building architecture and also with the landscape plan that has a combination of preservation of existing trees with some new ornamental landscaping. I think it will be a very nice addition to Taylor Parkway. No further comments at this point, thank you.
Okay. I assume you're here to represent the application. Please state your name and address for the record, and then tell us a little bit more about the project.
Absolutely. My name is Brandon Klein with Geis Companies. I'm our Vice President of Design. Address is 10020 Aurora Hudson Road, Streetsboro, Ohio. Also with me is Jim Weast. Jim is President of Roof's North American Division, our client. So very excited about this project. As Ms. Lieber noted, it's pretty exciting when you have a manufacturing client that is so important to sustainability. Their project, their, their, their business core is basically reprocessing scraps from different other manufacturing users, reclaiming them and then compounding them into briquettes that can repurpose, you know, metal scraps, wood scraps, plastic scraps, and be able to be repurposed and reused. So you end up with a net zero waste. So they, basically in this building, they'll have a few operations. One is creating and manufacturing the machines that actually do this work, so they can sell those machines to other clients and then also collecting scraps to be able, from clients with contracts, to be able to compound and, and process other, other manufacturer scraps that may not need the machine itself, might have a smaller demand. So the project's located on Taylor Parkway. The initial build is a 25,000-square-foot footprint. It's a 5,000-square-foot of office for two floors, so it's a total of 10,000 square foot of office. So it'll be 30,000-square-foot building, usable building in the Phase 1. As you see in the site plan, there are, one of the beauties of this site and why it enticed our client was the ability to expand as they continue to grow and produce and sell. Their hope obviously is to have, be able to fit the max build-out, so the site allowed them to meet their future expansion needs, hopefully as successful as they are. From a site plan orientation perspective, we are trying to maintain the nice foliage that's along the streetscape, so you can kind of see in those green areas, a lot of mature trees that we're going to try to maintain. There's a front patio to the office space as an amenity, well landscaped. And then one of the big items here, the site will be obviously graded to allow for drainage, to be able to naturally flow back to its current discharge point to the rear of the site. Right now, there's kind of a natural ditch that runs in a drainage easement that kind of meanders on this part of this project. We'll be able to collect and, and push all that water to a storm retention pond, maintain all the water on-site, and then discharge slowly to current standards. So hopefully that'll also improve adjacent properties and adjacent areas, because obviously right now, it's kind of just a naturally farmed land that's, allows for some puddling and swelling from that. From an architectural standpoint, it's a pre-engineered metal building with an enhanced front facade, again emphasizing the look of the wood. The core roots of the company roof has a lot of natural, you know, obviously nature is an important feature to sustainability. So creating that wood and metal front is the core of their building with the green canopy that is their branded color. One tweak that we did submit to the board was material number six. It is currently shown here appropriately. We originally had proposed the three sides of the building, the both sides and the rear, to be a white pre-engineered metal siding, and it's being changed to a light gray. Just wanted to make sure that it, durability and cleaning and, and doesn't show dirt as much. So outside of that, happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to kick it over to the general public. If anybody in the general public has any questions or comments at this project, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none, I am going to close the general public session. Now I'm going to kick it over to the commission. Does any of the commission members have any questions or comments in regards to this project?
I guess I have a couple of questions. The retention basin, is that going to be phased accordingly, like, or is it going to be a full build-out?
We'll be installing a full, full size for the entire build in Hartsgate. So it's sized appropriately for, I'll call it max build.
Right from the beginning?
Right from the beginning.
Okay. All right. And then as far as, then the second curb cut would be introduced possibly for future, for the future buildings then?
Correct. The, the current Phase 1 footprint doesn't meet the needs to have a fire lane or a fire loop around the building for fire truck access. As soon as we expand, where you can't get, you know, 150-foot hose length from a truck parked spot for a fire truck, we would need to loop that road around. So because of that, eventually, there'll be probably, I'll call it two phased fire loops that, that get changed. You can see the dashing of the one that kind of slices through the, the big production. That's when we build, you know, Phase 2, which would be an office expansion and a manufacturing expansion to the east. And then Phase 3, which would be the large manufacturing expansion, the loop road would extend to the rear of the property.
All right. And then as far as, obviously as the expansion happens, there's more truck bays then, I would assume?
Not many. We may end up doubling, you know, to six total at full build.
Okay.
So it's not like there's going to be a big distribution hub. At most, there'll be, you know, currently there's two docks and one drive-in. We kind of see potentially two more and another drive-in in the future.
Perfect. All right, is there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
So is this like, like a smelting plant, with like recycling, where they're bringing other particles in from other companies?
It's like particles, it's like, I call it metal scraps, metal shrapnel, you know, like loose chippings, wood chippings.
Okay.
And then it gets put into a machine, almost into a hopper, and then it almost gets ramcompacted to a, call it a cylinder or a brick.
Okay, like a briquette?
Yep.
Is it metal, steel, wood, I mean?
All. Metal, steel, plastic, wood.
Okay.
Hey, sir, if you, if you want to add additional comments, come, come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thanks, I'd like to add, my name is Jim Weast, I work for Roof, friend of the company, and we make machines.
State your name and address for the record.
Jim Weast?
Address.
860 Waybridge Drive, Springfield, Ohio. And I also want to add, good job that he's doing here, is we don't make, we don't take, we're not smelting, we, we make machines do that.
Okay.
Okay, and we do, on the occasion, we run tests. You know, if a customer wants to send a couple hundred pounds of material in, we'll put it in our test lab, but it's all done so we can make the machine for them and ship it to their location in North America.
So as far as, like, there's nothing like burning, no furnaces, EPA?
No.
Okay. Okay.
It's all a dry process.
Okay.
No smells, no fire, no smoke.
Was there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, Mr. President, one, one issue, and I'm sorry, I happen to be the, the councilman for the area. I'm hoping that all your drivers, truck drivers especially, are told that they have to use Route 57 as their exit and entrance point into your plant. And I guess what I'm wondering, is there anything that you can do on your driveway to encourage the drivers to use 57?
Put up a sign?
That'll help.
There, there really is not much truck traffic into this facility.
Okay.
I think we talked about three to four trucks a day, if that, and that's at full.
These are big machines, it's out for $200,000, $300,000 a piece, so our first plan is to make one or two a week. So it's, it's not a lot of truck traffic.
Just so I don't hear about three using Sugar Ridge, sorry.
Understood.
Especially if our new road goes in. And then the other thing that I noted, whoever drew your rendering, he needs to move the American flag to up front instead of the German flag. I understand.
All right, is there any other question or comments from the commission? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend, what's the number on it? That we recommend PP 720240252, Rough Bricketting Systems for Taylor Parkway.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Ali.
Yes.
Grupman.
Yes.
Schuman.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Smolik.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the second application.
Root Road Park, 8949 Root Road, PPN 07-00-011-103-058. Owner, City of North Ridgeville, 7307 Avon Beldon Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio, 44039. Proposal consists of park pavement and site improvements, property zoned R1 Residence District.
All right. Director Lieber, findings of facts?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out that under our charter, there's a mandatory referral section that any street, et cetera, et cetera, and other types of public improvements have to be referred to Planning Commission for review and recommendation. So this particular park improvement meets that threshold for Planning Commission review, which is why you are reviewing it this evening. It will still, this project still has to go through, you know, public bidding processes, and we are also in conversation with the Ridgefield HOA upon which a portion of this parking lot will currently exist and would be improved upon. So we're working out those details, but in terms of the site plan and design, that's for the commission's review tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Is there, I guess you're representing the application? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Rich Frederiksen, I work for Rafter A L T D. Our office address is 42653 Oberlin Illyria Road in Oberlin, Ohio. And yeah, we've got a improvement set of drawings for Root Road Park, which mostly consists of improving the existing gravel area into an asphalt paved area. We're going to have 204 parking spaces available, eight of which will be ADA accessible. We will have a retention, a master retention pond that is in the north area of the site that will control all the stormwater coming off the site and will actually improve the stormwater leaving the site into the Dixon ditch that's in the, the northwest corner shown on the drawing there. And we'll have a privacy fence at the beginning of the site entrance coming in. Asphalt pavement improved all the way around, the driveway access will be improved in a, in a dumpster pad. Outside of that, that's basically the improvements is asphalt improvements and stormwater improvements. Any, any questions?
Okay, I'm going to kick it over to the general public. If there's anybody here in the general public who wants to ask a question or comment on this project, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Tom Newman, 34129 Harvest Point Drive. Just a question on the retention, so you've got a retention pond there, and it's going into the ditch. I guess the question is how much is going to be overflowing into the ditch? I believe that's the same ditch that runs from the back of my neighborhood and, and goes down there as too. So I assume the ditch is able to handle whatever additional water will be going into that area there. The question is how much, has that been accounted for?
Okay, once I get through all the other questions or comments, I'll kick it over to the consultant, he'll be able to answer that question for us. Is there any other questions or comments from the general public? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public session. Yeah, do you mind explaining to us the outlet for the basin and the existing capacity at Dixon ditch?
Yeah, I will, I'll even show you, sir, on our drawing set here. What, what's going to happen is with the, all the storm events, we're going to have actually less water going into the ditch than before. That's basically by Ohio code or state regulations, we have to do that. So I've got, I can show you that on the drawing, what the discharge will be free and post for our 100-year storm event. As you can see here, I'll try to show it to you.
You could state it.
If you want to refer it to, it's on sheet 6.1, if you have that.
You could state it for the record, if you don't mind.
So for the 100-year storm event, the pre-developed flow, which would be the, the flow that before the development is 40, 40.09 cubic feet per second, and afterwards, we're going to have 10.94 cubic feet per second, so that's a substantial reduction.
Thank you. Okay, does any of the commission members have any questions or comments on this project?
Mr. President, I, I heard a, part of this parking lot is on Ridgefield property. Have, has, have we consulted with Ridgefield officials on this? Because I've had some experience with them in the past on things similar to this, and it's difficult.
Mr. Chair, yes, to Councilman Abens' question, we are in, currently in dialogue. They were, they've been aware of this project. We currently, the city has a lease with Ridgefield dating back, I'm not sure what year it was implemented. Okay, 2013. So we're basically proposing to pave the same area that's currently part of that lease arrangement, and we're proposing to both improve the surface and the stormwater. So we're just in discussion with the HOA about the best way to move forward. There was a legislative approval in 2019 that would have been an addendum to that agreement to allow for paving, but we can't seem to find any indication that addendum was created or executed. So we've been kind of down a few rabbit holes, looking for some historical information, but we are in communication with the HOA leadership and as to how we can potentially move forward with this project. So until we iron that out, we won't be convincing.
Thus far, they seem to be agreeable?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments? I guess I'm not sure who to ask, but the master plan for the park here, because, you know, this is a lot of money put in this investment in this parking lot, is there any changes on the proposed athletic fields? What's like, I guess, the final master plan for this facility?
So Kevin Fugers, Parks and Recreation Director with the City of North Ridgeville, address is 29940 Westminster Drive, North Homestead, Ohio. Yeah, the plan for Root Road Park, our overall line goal would turn Root Road Park more into a pocket park in our community. The, the city and the park system owns 22 additional acres up at Shady Drive Complex. Our goal is to obviously develop Shady Drive Complex more into a sports complex hub for our community and turning Root Road Park and Frontier Park more into those pocket parks within our community to provide more of a bikeability, walkability, and kind of alleviate some of our stress off of South Central Park as well.
Okay, now, the 204 parking spots, how was that determined? Was that based on your players and then the turnaround per games?
Yeah, so we didn't have much parking data, unfortunately, because of, it's always just been a grindings and stone parking lot. A lot of their higher usage points are coming in the morning with the younger kids. We shrunk this parking lot down by about 60 spots, so we made it about 204 spots for the program, but we didn't have any like true data to physically sit there and say how many of these spots we truly need.
But you know how many fields are striped?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then like, so you could determine it from the field striping based on players and use the proportion of like, you know, 1.2 cars per player or?
So the, the soccer program is ran by the NRSL, which is the North Ridgeville Amateur Soccer League, is not ran by the City of North Ridgeville, so we're not like physically up there on a day-to-day basis to see how many physical cars are on there, to know how many kids and parents and grandparents are moving in and out of this space.
Okay, and then is there any possible location for future expansion if this parking lot is deemed too small?
Maybe, maybe a very, a very limited amount of parking space, not a whole lot left room after this, but maybe, maybe a little bit overrun this one area of the spot. But we've got an area that we're going to stockpile spoils and basically a mound area there that'll, that'll kind of, you know, basically buffer on the north, on the north side there, on the east, northeast side, so, excuse me, southeast, southeast side. And, yeah, I, not, not at this moment, not a lot.
And then I guess there's like the four or five residents that live up against the park, the, the six-foot privacy fence is adequate for their needs? Administration hasn't heard anything otherwise, like maybe additional mounding or plantings?
I, I actually went out there on a couple of occasions to try to speak to those residents prior to this, like last year, to try to let them know what our plans were. Unfortunately, just probably the time of day I was going, everything, I was not able to get out. Also, I believe letters were sent to those residents as well to kind of let them know what's going on, what we were looking at doing as well, so. So the six-foot wide fence that we do have is ours, that's going on the east end toward the north.
Okay. All right, does any of the other commission members have any questions or comments? All right, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reapprove the Root Road Park project.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Grootman?
Yes.
Schuman?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, ma'am secretary, please read the last application for tonight.
Shady Drive Complex, 37077, Shady Drive, PPN 07-00-035-102-041. Owner: City of North Ridgeville, 7307 Avon Beldon Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio, 44039. Proposal consists of constructing a new playground, property's owned, R1 Residence District.
Okay, Director Lieber, findings and facts?
Mr. Chair, this is also a mandatory referral to planning commission due to it being a park improvement. There's really no planning issues here.
All right, thank you. Director?
Hi.
Do you want to stand, state your name and address for the record?
Kevin Fugruze, Parks and Recreation, City of North Ridgeville, address 29940 Westminster Drive, North Homestead, Ohio. Shady Drive Complex, home of our 13 baseball softball diamonds in our multipurpose facility that holds batting cages and a lot of our programming, three-quarter mile Y six-foot Y trail system that was completed in the spring of 2020. Our goal is to add a brand-new playground to Shady Drive Complex in between Diamonds 6 and 7. There's currently a Little Tykes playground at the back, at the end of the parking lot, where you can kind of see where the black rubberized mulch is in the aerial shot. That playground was installed roughly about 20 years ago. I understood the idea behind installing that playground 20 years ago, because Diamonds 10 through 13, they house our T-ball and coach pitch programs, which are obviously our underage groups. But with the growth and the additional amenities added to this park system over the past 68 years, and having a, you know, interloping trail system, it makes sense to more or less have a centralized playground for our residents and our park users. So, we have worked with Snyder Recreation and Jeff Snyder on a new playground to be added to that location, plenty of parking, slides, swings, you know, climbing features for the kids and everything like that. It's for ages 5 to 12. There is a plastic order that'll go around with wood fiber mulch in place as well. Our public works department will remove and tear down the existing playground in the back, remove it, topsoil, seed it, and be done, and then we'll have this brand-new playground that ever dries out sometime in the spring. So, any questions?
Okay, is there anybody from the general public who has a question or comment on this project? Hearing none, public session is closed. Any of the commission members have any questions or comments on this project?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
The ground covering, the chips, is it the rubberized, is it wood chips, or...
Yes, wood fiber.
Okay.
Yep, wood chips.
Excellent, okay.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Having used the, with my grandchildren, the one at South Central, I find it very advantageous that there is shade. Is there any shade planned here?
No, sir. Other than what you see over the top of the slide, the climbing feature right there.
Because in the summertime, it'll get hot.
Yes, sir.
Might want to think about some trees.
Think about it.
Is there any other questions or comments? I guess I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
As far as the layout goes, based on the programming on those fields, I mean, there's no way, like, a home run, if you will?
Yeah, no, there isn't. Age groups are like seven and eight that play up there, so, I mean, maybe a kid gets old one, but...
Right.
It's very few and far between.
Okay.
The only time I've ever seen anything go over that fence is when we pulled the USA National Softball Qualifier up there, but you have 16-year-old girls who are out there with college scouts scouting them, and you see those balls go flying, but other than that, I've never seen any of our kids actually have one yet.
Is there any, for the parents, is there any planned seating around this playground?
I believe, I believe so. Oh, yeah. No, not right there. I don't believe we have any seating in that area at this time.
Is that something that could be a possibility?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay. Because, yeah, a lot of times, parents, you know, like to sit and watch their kids.
Correct, yep.
Having built multiple playgrounds, right, Jeff?
Yes.
All right, is any of the other commission...
Mr. President, the biggest problem I see is the coaches keeping their kids' minds on the game rather than that playground.
Yeah, it's probably going to happen, yes.
Any other questions or comments? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would move that we recommend Shady Drive Complex 37077 to counsel.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Grootman?
Yes.
Schuman?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Is there any other business brought before planning commission this evening? Hearing none, planning commission is adjourned. Good night, everybody.